Okay, the time is. Okay, the time is. Yeah. Okay, the time is twelve oh one. We will call this meeting to order. This is the scheduled meeting of the Findlay City Council Planning and Zoning Committee. I am the chairman, Councilman Brian Baumann from the fifth ward. I will allow the other committee members to introduce themselves.
Dennis Selman, second ward.
Grant Russell at large.
Dan Dearm at fourth ward.
And it looks as though Councilman Niemeyer was not able to join us today. Would we like to vote to excuse him or just move on with the, move on with the program? Okay, okay, so item number one, we will begin with the proposed zoning permit and fee adjustments. And Mr. Martin had to step out, so we will maybe pause for a second. Or can Mr. Atkins begin that conversation?
Basically, we took your, your advice. We went back to the drawing board. Mr. Martin is printing out the copies for you, so he can explain a little bit of the updates that we had made. Here you go.
Thank you, sir.
So we sent this out last week. Any, anything you noticed, anything that you had questions about?
Yeah, may I?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's definitely been made simpler.
Yeah.
And I, and I. Just looking at, at new construction. How many, how many single-family new construction? What is the definition of new construction?
Anything that's being a new dwelling, a full new dwelling is new construction for.
Do we get a lot of, of.
For additions.
Six hundred or less, single-family new dwellings?
That is, that's in alignment with our flood code. Our flood code only allows an accessory structure to go up to six hundred square feet per FEMA regulations. So for accessory structures, any, any additions at that level, it made sense to keep it up to the six hundred mark. And then for accessory structures alone, six, we allow it to go up to nine hundred if you're on a normal parcel. So that's why the cutoff was nine hundred. Then taking the mythology of you wanted to combine and make a little bit simpler. Our zoning code starts at nine hundred square feet is the minimum for R three. Eighteen hundred minimum living area for R four, R one. So we kind of, any typical house that has been built in the city of Findlay over the past ten years has been a minimum, the maximum of two hundred, two, yeah, two thousand five hundred square feet. So to make things simpler, any single-family house that's built in the city of Findlay now falls under that two hundred and fifty dollar permit. So the first two levels are.
The first two, there really shouldn't be anything under, under new construction, correct?
Addition, if there's an addition, sometimes additions may fall under a thousand square feet, nine hundred square feet. Typical addition may be twenty by twenty on the back end of somebody's property.
That's what I was trying to clarify on the definition of new construction.
Yep, yep.
So it's, additions are included.
Additions are included, yes.
And, and run me, run me through this, the zero to six hundred was tied to something in our flood code?
Our flood code, the maximum for an accessory structure for new construction is six hundred square feet if you're inside the floodplain. That's FEMA laws, that's the maximum. So it made sense to cut that off at that point because now you're, you're asking for a hundred dollars there, but you're also asking for another fifty dollars in development for the floodplain. So you don't wanna, you didn't wanna, I didn't see it feasible for residents to, you know, pay a hundred and fifty dollars then another hundred. Where would, they're still paying a hundred and fifty dollars in the long run.
What if I'm, what if I'm building a, a six hundred square foot addition and I'm not in the flood zone? I'm still paying the one fifty?
Yeah.
I'm still paying for the flood stuff?
Yep, no, you're not paying for the flood stuff.
Well, if I'm doing a, if I'm, if I'm doing an addition.
Yeah.
You said, you said the addition is the fifty bucks is because of flood. I'm confused as to why we have to be. I, I'm just pushing towards more simplification, zero to nine hundred, or zero to a thousand, or whatever it is. I, I see you tying it to the code, but it's minutia that doesn't make sense to me. And I would drop them all to a hundred, or all to a hundred and fifty, or two hundred, or whatever, and be done with it. To me, it's, it's, the deciding factor is, is recouping your costs. And if you're saying that, that I, the difference between a six hundred foot addition and a six hundred and one foot addition is an extra fifty bucks, I'd like, why? Why, why is, why is that the case? And if there really isn't a case, then make it one fifty or two hundred, or what, you know, simplify. Cause I, you know, how many people would, would you do a six hundred and one foot addition? Or would you somehow shave off? You know, one foot, one square foot, so you. It's, it seems random, and I, that's, that's the push. Other than that, I thought the rest of it looked. I had, I had no other, no other qualms, and I liked, I just compare what you, what is in front of us now from what we started with. And it, to me, it is a huge, huge improvement, and I, you know, I like the direction. I just, I just, the only questions are still on the, on the, those minute breakdowns in the, in those building areas. And I, and I probably could say the same thing for, for, you know, commercial. But other than that, no, you know, I would potentially just go zero to five thousand square feet. Call it five hundred bucks and a thousand, be done with it.
Commercial industrial, okay.
You know, once again, are we doing a lot of nine hundred square foot accessory structures in, in commercial or industrial areas?
So I hear him saying, eliminate the first line in the residential and the first line in commercial.
Less is more.
Yeah.
And then, you understand that? Yeah, so it'll be, so the first line in residential would just be zero to nine hundred, leave it at one fifty and two hundred. And then in, in the commercial and industrial, it would be zero to five thousand, and leave it at five hundred and a thousand. So just eliminate that first line in both papers. That makes sense?
But if, but if there's.
I'm okay with that.
If there's a real reason against it, I just haven't heard it.
So, so on commercial end, so. The zero to five thousand square feet. In a larger capacity, yes, that makes, I mean, I, I understand where you're going, and you want to simplify things. If you look from prior fee schedule to this fee schedule, it's simplified over hundred to two hundred percent. Working with this every day and working with the public. The amount of accessory structures that we get in the commercial, whether it's like a gas station that has a little small accessory structure, or shopping center or whatever, moving something, moving to a fee to where it's almost five hundred for a permit for a little shed. I mean, that's, that's where I just can't fiscally get my head around as an enforcement person. And I think just one column does make sense, that it does alleviate some of, some of the cost and burden on smaller business owners that I deal with on a daily basis. Their sheds are typically twenty-five by twenty-five, twenty by twenty, twenty-four by twenty. So they're smaller in capacity. And even with their additions, with it being double what the accessory structure is on that fee schedule, their additions are, there are a few that are on that, on that, under a thousand, but most of them are over a thousand. The time spent on a smaller addition isn't as much as the time spent on a five thousand foot addition or a new build.
Fair enough.
And that's why, that's why I left that little extra column, cause I went back and forth with what you guys were saying. And it just, I couldn't wrap my head around of the time I spent going and visiting a site on a smaller project, you know? I mean, that covers it, in my opinion.
So I went.
Even, even on residential too, yeah.
You like it the way you got it.
I like this a lot better than what we had in, in the past.
I'm, I'm ready to, if you want a motion, I can make one.
Mr. Russell. Go ahead.
A move that we would recommend to the full council that we adopt the updated zoning permit fee schedule as presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Okay. Does this go into effect at the new, beginning of the new year or immediately?
I anticipate all the changes we're making in twenty twenty-five would go in January one of twenty-six.
We don't do legislation to affect new fees, do we? Law Director, or is it?
I was reading some other documents.
I don't recall. Yeah, for a fee schedule, do we have that in legislation?
So probably similar, like we did for parking fees, but I don't know what's been done historically in the past. So we discussed that that was, this is something that.
Administrative.
Is something that people choose to go and submit for an addition where a parking fine is something that actually they broke a law. So that was something that had to actually go through the legislative body, where this is somebody's choice to actually submit this. Now, it had to go through the certain body, but I don't know if it has to go through the legislative body.
I would, there would not be a requirement. I just don't know what the city's done in the past. It's an administrative sort of function to establish those fees. And I don't know that that's generally something you would have public input on, which is what legislation would do.
So. So.
You don't even need to take it to council?
And I would think this is also aligned, sorry, go ahead.
The committee report goes to council.
For approval.
The council, the full council either agrees with our recommendation or doesn't. But I'm wondering if that, their agreement then sets it. But, but that's, that's something that you all can figure out. And if we need legislation to affect this change, then, I mean, it's kind of a given in the, in the recommendation in, in the motion that legislation would be, this is a request for legislation to be drawn up if, if, if it's needed, I guess is what I'm trying.
If, if I may, the, if, as we are talking through this, I recall in recent, in my tenure, we've changed airport fees as well as park fees, and those go through the committees. Discussed in the recommendation from the meeting minutes goes to council just as accepted as is. So I would align this in a similar fashion, different than parking fines.
I think that's fair.
Okay, I will work with Law Director Feitner to confirm, and it will be presented as necessary at the next council. Thank you for your input.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we will begin discussion again on the maintenance code. Who would like, Mr. Conduct, Mr.?
Matt Credonia with Regional Planning. So I've been working with Law Director Feitner and Eric Atkins, and we've had some discussions. Gotten feedback from the community, gotten feedback from council, et cetera. So during those discussions, it was, it was discussed that five twenty-one point oh two dilapidated structures is currently on the books. And the discussion was, and Mr. Feitner might expand on this, but a lot of the things that we want to achieve with a maintenance code can be, could be achieved with five twenty-one point oh two, but rather poorly. It, it, it could accomplish a lot of the things that we want to accomplish with a maintenance code, but for it to, to operate well, we should update that. So then we took a look at, well, let's, rather than adopting a whole new international maintenance code, let's look at what changes will we need to make to five twenty-one point oh two dilapidated structures to accomplish our goals. And so I worked on that for a while. And so the first page is the current ordinance. There's nine parts to the dilapidated structures. Currently, the city utilizes this section more for the demolition of blighted structures. But you'll see, you know, it talks about loose bricks and different things like that. So what I did, working, working from the International Maintenance Code, taking cues from that. What, what topics do they, you know, architectural elements, accessory structures, roofs and downspouts? I updated chapter five twenty-one point oh two dilapidated structures to a better version. The Law Director has reviewed it, and he made some suggested changes, which, which are in the copy that's in front of you now. So this is, I guess, another way to look at it. What I like about this is we're simply amending what's already on the books. And two, even as a person that looks at codes all the time, I do find the International Maintenance Code to be a little bit confusing, where I think this is more simple. And three, you know, we had different discussions about possible unintended effects of adopting the International Maintenance Code. One of the effects that was brought up to me was, does the maintenance code require homes on South Main Street to have hand railings on their steps? And we were looking at the maintenance code and trying to take out the things that would indicate that that is needed. Where this really approaches things purely from a maintenance standpoint and things that are broken. So it's, this in my mind clearly states, you don't have to put in a handrail. But if your handrail is falling over and broken and is a safety hazard, you need to either remove it or fix it. So I think this is more focused on just purely things that are breaking off houses, houses that are not weather tight. You know, they're missing a whole side of siding, roofs that are visibly sagging and, and so. So this is another way to, I guess, tackle the issue. I personally like it a lot. And so I guess we wanted to have, bring this to you guys for consideration and have some discussion about this method today. Rob, is there anything you'd like to add to my little speech?
Do I need to be recognized by the chair, or is this more informal?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. What's nice about this document, I'll make a couple of comments. It's not a, you shall do this and you shall do that style of document, like Matt just said. This is about things that exist and things that are falling apart and become unsafe or unsightly. The five twenty-one point zero two in its current existence has been around for just over twenty-five years. Having used it before to prosecute certain problems in the community over the years, I could use five twenty-one point zero two in its current existence to probably take care of most structurally poor problems that we could find or need to address in the city of Findlay. The proposed additions and clarifications that Matt has in front of you that I've reviewed is just more clear, more detailed, more modernized. It's easier for enforcement, it's easier to understand for a property owner to know what's going to get them in trouble, although common sense should apply in a lot of situations. But instead of adopting some twenty-five page maintenance code that some other company drafted for across the United States, I think whenever a city has an opportunity to draft something on its own, it can look to its own community and needs, like the South Main Street reference and those things, to say, what, what do we really need? What have been our problems, and what do we need on the books to help enforce it? I think that's what this does.
I don't know, I can't speak for the rest of the committee, but I, I think that, that, I, I think that that kind of does what we want it to do. And we don't have to kind of reinvent the wheel, so to speak.
Well, I'll say one more thing. Number seven on the proposed five twenty-one point zero two, I did make a comment to Matt whenever I did that yesterday, whenever it was. There may need to be some more discussion between him and I, or I need to give it more thought of the requirements or the wording in number seven. The, the areas of blistering paint and peeling and flaking, unprotected metal surfaces. I mean, I don't know what all, some of that is for, and what that concerns. Some people like the look of old faded peeling paint on a backyard garden shed, so to speak. Hard to say.
I would like the record to state that my barn is currently being painted as we speak.
I wasn't thinking of that when I, when I said it, but I have, I've just seen people have these little, you know, they have outside shelving to, to do potting with soil and so forth, and, and they are, it's already an older building, and I like the look that it has, and that, that should be their decision. Some of this needs looked at a little bit, but the idea here and the rest of the ninety-five percent of this, I think, is in good shape.
Mr. Russell, or you, or Mr. Dearm?
I like the overall direction. I think, I agree, it's, you know, modifying something that's on the books is way better than introducing all new. So generally speaking, I think we're headed in the right direction. So the opening sentence, or the, the first sentence in red here, it talks about any structure or premises within the city. So we're talking about residential, commercial, industrial, right? And that, or is this limited to just resident, or? So I'm looking at this right here, so, this right here, so just, your marked up one, so this is right here. Alright, so no, no owner, occupant, or responsible for, shall permit any structure or premises within the city of Findlay. So we're talking, I just want to make sure we're talking about residential, commercial, industrial. Is that right? It's all structures? Okay, cool, okay.
Yes, all structures.
Okay, very good. So I, Matt, we had talked about on item six, that same document, some vegetation obstruction, excessive uncontrolled vegetation, brush plant growth. One of the issues I had brought up was just dead trees hanging over a sidewalk as a safety issue. And that did not make it in here, so you, what, did you just forget, or you don't like that comment, or what's your thoughts on that?
No, I like the comment.
Okay.
Actually, when I was finalizing it.
Okay.
Your comments went in my mind, and.
Okay.
But I have noted, we should have some language about dead trees.
Okay.
You, you know, you have a two hundred year old dead tree with no, no leaves on it.
Yeah.
It will fall at some point.
Yeah, right.
In terms of overhanging the sidewalk, I wasn't sure if, if that's covered in other areas, but we could, we could look at that and add it if needed.
Yeah, alright, just, I'll let you figure that out, okay. And then just there, the very last sentence, I just want to talk about how, and the enforcement, so the very last. And to recover associated costs as a lien upon the property. So that's the enforcement then, so we can put a lien, that, that's kind of the thought. So we're gonna, walk me through the enforcement, I guess, okay. So you got a, you know, a dilapidated structure, Eric, maybe, how do you, what, what's your process?
Phone call comes in, complaint gets filed on a computer. You go out and investigate the situation, it has to be, if, if this code's implemented, it has to be one of those relevant criterias to be a dilapidated structure. At that point, a report goes over to the Law Director. Law Director, whoa.
Which are typical, when are we?
We get the, we get the report over to you, and then you take it from there, and then he goes to the seven fifteen section.
Well, there's, when I saw this last subsection C paragraph, I didn't, I didn't talk to Matt about it, but I, there's some comments I wanted to make about it. When I first read it, I'm seeing it say that it's adopted pursuant to the authority granted in a higher vice code, seven fifteen point two six and seven fifteen point two six one. If it stopped there, the sentence sort of makes sense. Seven fifteen point two six of the higher vice code allows for a municipality to inspect buildings, homes, or whatever it might be that may be in a dilapidated, unsafe, dangerous state. And for instance, we've used this recently on Park Street to board up a house. We did it recently on G Street to board up a residence there. Seven fifteen point two six allows a municipality to give or attempt to give proper notice to a person thirty days in advance. But it, the law does allow for a city officials to actually go into a building or a home, whether the owner likes it or not, and inspect it. This could be for fire safety reasons, it could be for a lot of reasons. So if it stopped there, that makes sense. I don't think the intent, and Matt can correct me, of any proposed new five twenty-one oh two is going to come with a cost recovery by a lien on the property. I don't think the city's going to go in and fix a railing for stairs or sinking porch, or whatever it may be. But to say that the section is adopted pursuant to that authority does make sense, because the higher vice code allows for municipalities to secure and demolish dilapidated structures. So I don't want people to get confused. So I don't want people to get confused over that. That may need to be shortened up a little bit or taken out altogether.
My intent is to have the law director do what he needs to do. That was from another community and I just put it in there. So whatever is recommended.
And, and speaking of the trees aspect, Eric, didn't we discuss, because if, if, if the tree itself, let's say, is in the boulevard or within the right-of-way, does that not, did we not discuss that as a part of the shade tree commission ordinance? Because those, those trees being a danger can then be, if reported, can then be directly taken care of by the street department, the folks down there.
Yeah.
But, but are, so with this one, are we, we're talking into the yard?
Into the yard.
Okay.
So, but we're.
Mr. Russell?
I concur with the general sentiments that this is the, a good direction. And I, I think the key thing for me was, I sat down to read the, that international code and wanted to hit myself over the head. You know, because, and I'm a, I'm a zoning geek and I hated reading through it. So big improvement. Let's continue with this, with this pattern. A question, Eric, on you, on the process. The call comes in, you go investigate. See that there's validity to the, to the complaint. Do you give the, the property owner, resident, whomever, an opportunity to resolve?
So typically now it's, I had to speak in future tense of this code if it is adopted the way that it is. Currently now though, we just strictly do dilapidated structures because that code that is to operate with is very vague. And nothing, none of the complaints, nine times out of 10 will fall underneath any of those criterias that are existing in the dilapidated section. But if there is something that falls in there, we do reach out to the homeowner and give them time, able time to correct the violation.
Rob, does it make sense for this code to specifically delineate what the, what the timeline is on something? We, the, the, the property, I'm just going to say property owner for clit, for ease. The property owner is notified and has X number of days to respond or something to that effect. So that, so that a homeowner who, who gets the notice and says, oh my gosh, what the heck is this? And immediately goes and looks at 521.02, can see, can see in the code what their responsibility time for, what, like what the actions they're supposed to, to, how they're supposed to respond.
Right. The answer to that is I would not want the steps or processes in, in the code. We've worked this out pretty good since I've been around as law director here in the sense of, these things are case-by-case basis. Every one of them ought to probably have a letter or a verbal conversation. A letter's better or both. To give the homeowner a chance to realize it's time to take care of this problem. They, they've known it for a while, maybe from their neighbors. Now they're getting it from the city and they know that there's some authority, authority and enforcement behind it. It's a kind of a case-by-case basis as far as timeframes. If it's a little old lady that has no capability of doing the work herself, she may need time to hire it out. She may give us a plan. We sit, wait and watch. And if they truly take care of it, then that ends the problem. If they're just lying to us, whatever the case may be, and putting us off, then we'll eventually give up and then we'll do the charges. When there's a conviction, they're going to be forced by the court then to remedy the problem. And that's the issue people get themselves into. This is a minor misdemeanor. If I, we charge somebody with 521.02 in its current state and future state, a first violation is a minor misdemeanor. But it comes with an abatement clause that says the court can or shall order the abatement of the problem. And I think it says within seven days, but the court can go 30, 40, 50, 60, whatever the court wants to do. That's what we want. We're not worried so much about fines. We're worried about putting them under the gun to get the problem remedied. So what people do who want to fight these kind of things is, well, it's only a minor misdemeanor and subject to a fine up to $150. When they fail to follow the court's order, then there's contempt and then there's jail. So they take a non-jailable offense and make it jailable by fighting the system. So these are case-by-case. It may be the problem of a tenant living in a landlord's house. So I've always said, let's deal with the tenant first because they're the one causing the trash problem or they're the one causing whatever it may be. And eventually, if the tenant's not going to do something about it, we reach out to the landlord. Sometimes we do it simultaneously. Again, it just depends. And so Joe Smith and I on those issues and Eric on the issue.
Two, you've, you've mentioned two things that I, that I want to have a conversation about. I, I would, I would hope that our process is always that if it is a rental property, and we know that it's a rental property, and we know who the property manager or property owner is, that when we notify the tenant of an issue, we also CC the property owner or property manager. That, that there's never a conversation between us and a tenant without the property manager. That's just an aside. I, I'll go back to say, I, I would, I would think it would be nice, I'm trying to look at, we agree in the ultimate, in the ultimate goal. The goal is to have the property owner resolve the issue in, in an expedient and least expensive way or in an expedient manner. But I think, I think it would be nice in the code to say that they have X number of days to acknowledge receipt of the, or acknowledge that they're, they've received the, the issue. And, and, and they have X number of days to work with the city to establish a plan. And, and if that's, if we give them, you know, and that we state in the, in the, in the, in the code what, what that, what that timeline is. The, the plan can say, hey, it's going to take four months to rebuild my front porch because I, because I'm a little old lady and I can't find the money and know the contractor. We could do that, but it's, but that's fine, but I, I think the response time should be laid out. So that from a, from a property owner's standpoint, they know what their legal responsibilities are to stay out of court.
To Mr. Russell's point, i- is there a way to, like, I don't know how to put it, like an administrative addendum that could kind of outline these processes that, that is kind of out there as a part of, of the code, so to speak? It's just so that the process is laid out and, and everything is kind of, I, I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud there.
Well, based on the conversations and the way that we've been doing things, and I think they've been successful with Eric and, and Joe Smith, is that when we look at a particular case, when that letter is written, that letter is written and includes the timeframes that we expect for that case. And I'd hate to pigeonhole ourselves to particular timeframes. If we've got a guy who we've prosecuted once every year and now it's another year and the same new problem at a different residence, I don't need to give him any time. I want to just follow the charges and move on because I've already worked with him, dealt with him, and I know he doesn't like to work with the city. I don't want to have to be mandated to wait 30 days and then give him 30 days and then, then I can do something. I, I would rather it be case-by-case and we include all that language in our letter the way we want it to be. I think, I, I prefer it that way, Grant, but, you know, people can tell us what they'd like to see and we can make it happen. We might have to show you an example of a letter, maybe, that we've written over the, over the months.
Certainly don't want to tie your hands, but this doesn't even say you're going to get a letter. It doesn't say, it doesn't say anything. I mean, I look at this and like, how do we enforce it? Maybe this is just dra, this last paragraph is just draft at this point and you're going to, but.
Well, all of our ordinances in, in any communities regarding junk vehicles, trash, these dilapidated structures, all of those, they don't, they don't have what we're going to do with them. It just tells you that it's a misdemeanor of the fourth degree or a minor misdemeanor and that you can be charged. Now, we can look at each case and do what's appropriate for that case. I don't want all that extra wording. If, if you're going to have all that in this section, then we're, we should add it to the junk cars and the trash.
No, I understand. I'm not looking to tie your hands, that's for sure. I'm just kind of trying to, I guess I don't, I don't know. I don't, I guess I don't know what our process is and I, you can't expect the general public to understand it either. You know, so where, maybe there's, we don't ever really define our process. I don't know.
I wouldn't want to. We, we define the process in the letter to that person on that particular case. Because the guy that, the guy that violates every year, there's no sense in even messing with it.
But there, but then the accusation is, is that the city's playing favorites. And if it's my barn that has a peeling paint, which it used to, which I did find aesthetically pleasing, that you're going to, you're going to give me a break and, and you're going to give the other guy not a break because he's not on counsel or whatever it is. And, and and I, and Rob, your, your point on the, on it's not in dilapidated cars thing, I mean, that, that's well taken and I, and that, that really is, that it's well taken and has a lot of weight. But even if it's not in the code, then, then I, it would be nice that we would make it easily known what, what the, for a first-time offender or, and I hate to use the term offender, for the first time somebody comes into the process, they have an under, they can easily find out what the, an expectation on, on what their response is.
That's in the letter.
Is this, is.
How do they even know they're going to get a letter? How do they know you're not going to drag them into co, co, court on day one?
That's, that's prosecutor's decision.
I would like to maybe see.
Again, so envision this. This is a typical process and the way that it works. So I'll use Joe.
We're going to write this down as you're saying it.
Joe's an easier exception. Example is, he, he comes to me and says, you know, we've, we've got this, this property that's got a 30-foot boat on it in the backyard. And I said, you gotta be kidding me. He goes, yep. He goes, I told the lady it's going to have to go and she's going to have to figure out what to do with it. I interrupt him and I say, she's not going to do anything with it because what do you expect for her to do with it? It's not even on a trailer. This is an actual case, by the way. And so I said, I gotta go see this boat. So I go out and I look at this boat. I can't believe it. There's a 30-foot boat in the backyard on Blanchard Street or whatever.
Just sitting in the grave.
Yep. And a 30-footer, mind you. So, you know, we made the lady aware that she can't do that. So what we did real quick was said, well, do you have any objection to us removing this boat? And of course, he's got a body camera on and everything else recording it. She said, sure, make the arrangements. And so we did. And the boat disappeared. And the problem was solved. But if she would have told us, don't set foot on my property or trespass and all this other stuff, then we would have had a problem and we would have had to treat that case differently.
Who paid for the removal of the boat?
In that case, I think the city has a certain pool of funds to do that. Eric Sterns came in with a $2 million boom truck and picked it up safely and moved it on the flatbed of a semi and they hauled it away.
And we sold it or junked it or?
It did not have any gasoline in it. Didn't have any motor in it. Didn't have anything.
No value.
At that point in time, I believe by law it was safe for the landfill. Or it could be sitting out at his lot. But it was purely junk. But it's an example of the strange things that we see. And, and we don't want to pigeon, our process, pigeonhole ourselves in, in the process. We need to be able to look at it and say, you know, we, we got to figure out a way to work this out and give them time. It's a big project. We've got one now that's cooking on Lima, is it Street? You know, with a junkyard operation. That can't be cleaned up overnight and that's going to be a tough one. Fortunately, the, the offender or violator in that case has an attorney, so we'll, we'll try to work things out with an attorney instead of the property owner. But we, we need to be able to be custom and, and go freestyle on the way we enforce these.
In the Lima case, he was, he was given four months. He was given a four-month timeframe via letter to clean up the property. And then, then a decision was made. It's like, well, there has been no, there's not been one ounce of movement towards the goal. So then,
Yeah.
the, the law director then made some decisions from there.
Right.
So, you know, I, I can speak from my vantage point in that we, we always try to give the property owner time to remedy the situation. That's, that's been my experience for 20 years. There's no benefit in not working with the property. It makes everyone's lives harder.
But it always starts the same way. We make contact with the property owner and, and in a short timeframe via verbally with Joe's camera running or by letter, request that they set up a plan to resolve the issue. And if, and if, and, and it seems to me it would be easy to say, if, if not in the code, in our published process for how we handle these things, we will make contact with the property owner verbally or via mail, certified mail, whatever, however you do it. And, and, and within 14 days of receipt of this, the, the property owner must contact us, contact the city with, and start discussions on a plan of attack.
If I might.
And Rob, yeah, go, go down.
No, I was just going to say, in, in order to resolve this, I, I would think that if it gives people heartburn about that it isn't articulated how this is handled, can we put a generic comment in the code that says that the offenders may be contacted by the law department or the planning commission to, you know, render a plan to fix the situation within the next 14 days or something like that. So they're put on notice that they're going to be contacted one way or the other, by phone, by mail, doesn't make any difference. But just to let them know that they're going to be communicated with.
I just don't think it's necessary because we are going to reach out and contact them. And it's going to have its own custom process for what we want to see as a remedy.
All right. If you don't think it's necessary, then we don't put it in there.
Yeah, I just wrote a letter today giving a person till November 10th to at least reach out to me with a plan. Didn't say I was going to charge you. Didn't say it had to be remedied. I just wanted a plan. Because in that particular case, I want to get a feel for whether they're going to take care of it or just fight it or just let it go. And so that was the vibe I got in that case and that's why I wrote it that way. So in that case, I asked for a plan.
So you, as the law director, don't think this is a, an issue?
No.
All right.
And, and, and if, in any kind of set of cases or new codes for anything, if we wanted to have memorialize our processes, then I think we would do it by way of having a, a policy. It wouldn't be in the code. It would be our policy. Like the police department has a policy for dealing with a, a mental health situation. They have a policy for how they use their body cams. It's not in the law. It's their policy. But we, when we meet, when I meet with Joe and Eric, that's what we're doing, but it's a policy, a new policy on every case. Here's our plan. Here's what we're going to do. Let's do it.
Okay, fair point on the policy. I'm, I'm in concurrence. It should not be in the, in the code, in, in this paragraph or this chapter. But I, but I would hope that we would have a pretty well-established and transparent policy. But we did, we did, we, we just simply have a difference of opinion on it. Probably nuanced. I'd like to go through this thing. I know Rob made some comments on some stuff and, and have some discussion on, on them. There was a mention of exterior openings and, and Rob recommended the removal of boarded or covered. And I think it's one thing to have a boarded window because a baseball went through it. And it's going to take me a while to have the window company make that, make that repair versus a, a boarded window that is boarded out of, out of, out of being a dilapidated situation with no intent of being resolved. Especially since we have going through our, our code, something that says you have X number of the, the time to complete a project li, you know, language. So we're going to say, hey, if you're doing something new, you've got to, you've got to resolve it with it. You've got to complete your project within six months. But if my house is going to hell, I can put up a board over it and I'm fine. And that, that, that's a, that doesn't make sense to me. And once again, with, with this being always being, each case is being handled as is, I don't think keeping boarded or covered in, for exterior openings, I think that's an issue that we should, we should look at versus ignore. I think that's an issue that we should, we should, uh, look at versus ignore.
I had a constituent in the fourth ward specifically reached out because there are rental houses that have boarded up windows, and he didn't like it at all. I mean, you know, so they, for what it's worth, they were not in favor of boarded windows. I mean, but you're saying the city does board windows?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I suppose if we're taking action on a property that the city doesn't own under the authority of the higher vice code or our own code, and we board it up, I don't think we're gonna go after ourselves for something that we did. Um, I mean, we're gonna have to write in an exception, which could be done as well, that if it is the city undertaking enforcement procedures of the higher vice code, then such boarding is an exception, you know, something of that nature. If someone wants to board up all their windows because they think it looks nice, then maybe that's a problem, and that's what you're talking about, or your constituents talking about. But-
There's a difference between boarding something up because you're in the process of resolving a bigger problem and, uh, boarding up something as it's, 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 as it's, as a, as a response to neglect that is, um, and just, and then never just solving, resolving the problem.
But I, I guess, maybe to play devil's advocate here, based on our processes, your, your process, Eric, we would know that if we got that report, that this is a problem versus we contacted them and they said it's because a baseball went through the window, and therefore they, they have plans to resolve it versus someone who has just boarded up a window because just a thought.
Yeah, to your point, the conversation with the property owner, yeah, it broke last week. We put the board up. Anderson Windows is manufacturing a new one. It'll be installed, uh, December 1st.
So that's okay.
And then it's like, great, uh, we'll, we'll check back in January. January, it's not fixed. June, it's not fixed. Now it's a problem.
Right.
So I, I don't know if you have any thoughts on if we should leave boarded in there and just do it on a case-by-case basis? Because, I mean, there are boarded up windows. I, I worked on one last year. I mean, that, that plywood had been there longer than some of my high school kids.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's permanent versus temporary, right? You can't, you know, we can't have boarded up windows or doors permanently or on an extended period of time. I mean-
And, and we could solve that by simply windows, doors, and other openings that are missing, broken, boarded, covered, or otherwise a disrepair for an extended, we could just add for an, an extended period of time or something that affect, you know, or, or what would be the law director's, uh, opinion on that? Or do we even need to do that?
I don't, I don't mind the boarding up staying in. It was just a thought that I had when I first reviewed it going, wait a minute here. You know, there's lots of reasons a window may be boarded up. So in the complaint and investigation process, it's certainly not hard to figure that out for the broken window via baseball in a nice neighborhood, and probably most of the neighbors are gonna know about it and, you know, joke about it a bit, and they know that's the problem. But when you got a house that's been boarded up so long that the board itself is beginning to warp, then that's probably an enforcement issue.
Agreed.
Mr. Helman.
How do you deal with, and I agree with what you're saying, how do you deal with a building downtown? And I've got one specifically in mind that has, you know, the big tall windows on the second or third floor, whatever. And it's been boarded up, so to speak, quote unquote, for six, eight years. Architecturally, it looks like hell. But somebody could say, well, and, and, you know, make an excuse for it. Architecturally, and from a historical standpoint, it doesn't fit into the neighborhood. Can you go after them?
Well, if we have an ordinance that allows us to, to do that, then we could.
That downtown falls within the downtown design review district, and there are specific, um, there are specific languages that, that no, no window shall be boarded up. So downtown has, I'd say, an additional layer of extra architectural-
But there are, aren't there, Danny? There are buildings with-
Where's the enforcement policy of that then?
Yeah.
On the downtown piece that you mentioned?
I mean, there is enforcement. Generally, it's complaint-driven. You know, I can discuss with you after the, I can discuss with you after the meeting the specifics, and we can go over that.
I've been told we gotta move on.
Any additional comments regarding the-
Regarding this code?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I guess that was my way of just saying, go ahead.
Uh, in accessory structures, number four, what's the definition of deteriorated, as in a fence that is deteriorated?
So, and either I can speak on this or Rob can speak on this. Um, you know, we can't, we are not going to be able to scientifically describe each point of deterioration or, you know, it is inherently subject to some interpretation.
It's like the old, uh, United States Supreme Court case from the 60s or 70s.
Yes, I-
You know what I'm gonna say? I, it's, I know obscene when I see it.
Yeah.
So.
But I just wondered if collapsed, partially collapsed. Okay.
I enjoyed talking about that case in college. That was, that was one of my favorites.
You know, I mean, maybe contrary to popular perception, um, it brings no joy for us to prosecute a homeowner or go after a homeowner. And nor do we have the time and resource, resources to nitpick on teeny little things. You know, if you look at the 15 cases that are prosecuted each year, like those are no-brainer. Oh, my gosh. Why hasn't, why wasn't this building tore down 20 years ago? You know, so, so, you know, if, if someone's missing one board from their fence, I, I don't think it would pass the common sense test of any of us sitting here that that is a issue that needs to be addressed.
And there's a level of, I don't wanna use the word necessarily protection, but there's a level of protection or discretion that also occurs at the prosecutor's office to say, oh, I appreciate Eric or Joe that you're making these requests for charges, but I drove by there last night, and there's no way I'm taking that one. Just sorry, I'm gonna let you know that. You know, we've done that many a times, and, and sometimes the officer doesn't like it, but that's the way it goes.
Thank you. On infestation number eight, you said, uh, Rob, I see, and I understand why you said affecting nearby properties, but that still needs to be, I think, a criteria. And I can think of a situation where a house that would probably be on, um, on the radar of, of, of this code, where carpenter ant infestation was being the, the the exterminator who was taking care of the neighbor's property could, uh, in their opinion, clearly stated that they could, they could watch the, um, invasion of carpenter ants from the, from the dilapidated structure next door. But if we say that that's not a, that, that type of situ- situat- I mean, there's no way for, the, the complaint could be made from the, from the neighbor about the carpenter ants, and, and it's a but it's, it's not, that, that's, that's the issue. And, and it's, and it's, and you could say, I don't care if you have carpenter ants on your own property and it's fine and dandy, but the minute they start coming over the lot line and eating the, eating the, the neighbor's house, then you have an issue. If we take, if we take that affecting nearby properties out, is that, is that, um, actionable?
Well, I think it, it makes it easier. And I don't, I don't know if I'm not understanding what you're saying or not, but I guess, I'm famous for my bad examples, so I guess what I'm saying is, is I don't wanna have to find out or prove or even investigate necessarily if the neighbors are upset about something. If we know a house has raccoons going in and out of it every dawn and dusk, and all the neighbors think it's funny and cute, then I got a problem because it's not affecting any of the neighbors and they don't care. But as a city that wants to keep things safe and sanitary, I would want to have the ability to remedy that problem no matter what the neighbors think.
Okay, so you were saying the affecting nearby properties was a limiting factor on the definition of unsanitary or hazardous conditions?
Right, because I might, I might have neighbors that don't care.
Point made. Thank you.
And I think one complaint that we just had about this, um, you know, like, if, if we've got birds flying in and out of a, out of a house and all kinds of bats and activity, I don't wanna have to go find a neighbor that, that even knows it or cares about it. If we know it as a city, we can start with the enforcement.
So where do we go with this?
I think you still have some wordsmithing to do, don't you?
And, I mean, a little bit?
I mean, I, the, so my notes are going to add back in the boarded up items.
Well, I like Rob's changes with the difference on the, on the ones that we've, we've talked about. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and, and the printed out version have Rob's, Rob's changes in them. Um, we're going to have a discussion and add in dead trees as potentially hazardous to the house or the neighbor's house, et cetera. Um, and then overhangs on the sidewalks. Uh, Rob and I are going to review item seven, which he, he wanted to have some discussion about the wording there. And then the final paragraph C, we either remove it, or I'm going to strike everything after 715.261.
Okay.
Um, in terms of amendments to chapter 521, amendments to chapter 500, they just go to city council? I mean, they don't go to, they don't go to planning commission. They don't, they just, they're directly?
Okay.
Yeah.
So then do we need to have another meeting to approve the final version, I guess?
Or are we comfortable, um, or are we comfortable as a committee allowing them to make those changes and move forward without discussing it again? Or would you, would you all feel more comfortable if we talked about it again next month?
Go forward.
Okay.
We're kinda running out of time.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
We can read more than once a month.
Yeah.
We're allowed.
I would go forward.
Okay. So, um, is anybody in a motioning mood?
Go ahead, Grant.
Be my guest.
All right. Well, I will make a motion to adopt the revised dilapidated structures. Uh, as is, well, I, uh, we're gonna make some, you wanna add, what, what are the, you wanna list out some of the things you're gonna talk about? That be?
No.
No? Just, um-
As discussed or something?
As-
Modified as discussed?
Modified as discussed. How about that?
Okay.
And ask for legislation to be drawn up.
Do we need legislation?
Yeah. We're gonna bring in a bend code.
I would second that motion.
And, okay, and legislation to be drawn up.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. We will move on to-
You want me to write that up, Brian?
Yeah, yeah.
May we, may I have a two-minute break?
Yes, sir.
What's, what's next?
Uh, wooded lots. Are you- Jake, are you able to begin that discussion?
I can't because he was making edits right before the meeting, and I had not seen them.
Okay, we will, we will wait for him to return.
It would, it would be nice if, um, the final, after the final edits are made, um, after the final edits are made to 521.02, that they be distributed to, uh, the committee. Even though it's, it's gonna march towards, um, uh, council, it's just another set of eyes for, um, uh, proofreading and ensuring understanding. So it's kinda, it's kinda like a, you're asking for clarification. Did this meet your, what you were thinking? And then I guess if, if there's, and then I guess if there's too many, if there's too many things that don't meet clarification, we can ask, we can call another meeting.
Yeah, I'm okay, even if, you know, just half hour, whatever, to talk about it.
Okay. Wooded lots, Mr. Kudarni.
Excellent. So 521.07, uh, is our current weed ordinance. What we're here to discuss is part B, natural landscaping permit. So essentially what this is, um, we get approached, uh, you know, someone that owns a 20-acre field, and they don't want, they, they wish to let it grow up uh, into woods, or we have a homeowner with a half acre and they wanna have a natural area. In a lot of ways, this natural landscaping permit is relief from kind of the lawn, the grass ordinance. And essentially, uh, what this request is communication between the city and the property owner. Property owner would come in with their, with their, with their property, the site of their property, and they say, we'd like this area to grow up into natural growth. Um, it's reviewed by staff and approved or denied. So, um, we do have property owners that wish to let, allow parts of their yard grow up into a more natural area. And this would allow them to do that with approval from, uh, the city. And really, it's, it's a way to communicate so that they're not getting a call about the weed issues. However, when we review it, we're going to look into considerations for the neighbors. You know, if you request that your front yard just be allowed to grow up, that's not gonna be permitted. Just for an aesthetic reason. And if you, you know, if you request the rear, you want, you have a space in the rear yard, or you have a double lot, there would be things such as like a courtesy mowing strip of like five, 10, 15 feet might be required. Like, yes, you can, you can let this half acre grow up, but you do have a requirement that you have to mow the 15 feet between yourself and the property owner. So when we first started with this ordinance, we had prescribed, okay, um, you have to have 20-foot courtesy strips, et cetera, et cetera. Um, a little bit, as we discussed, you know, every property is so different, every situation is so different, um, that we wanted to have the flexibility to kind of find the solution that fits each property. Now, the solution may be, no, you don't have enough space. You're not gonna be permitted. Feel free to appeal the decision to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And, and I don't see us getting many of these, but when people, we do not have any relief in the code for people that want to do this. People that want to do this, it's just not an option in our code, and we've had enough requests that we do want to make this an option.
Mr. Russell?
I like the direction. Um, one question is, do we really need in the, in the, uh, B, part three, application, sub B, uh, maintenance plan identifying the list of proposed native or natural plant species?
I would, I would strike one and two. Mowing or trimming schedule, if any, and contact information for property owner. Which that's generally on all permits, but we could even strike that. But, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of the, the Hancock Parks Department building on Main Cross. You know, they, they planted like native species grasses in the front.
Correct.
Technically, that is a violation of the weed ordinance, or the grass ordinance potentially. But this would help, help, you know, they could apply for that, or someone, someone wanting to- But this would help, help, you know, they could apply for that, or someone, someone wanting to do something like that could apply for this. But to that point, the Parks Department does mow it, I believe, twice a year. To kind of keep, keep those native plants healthy and growing.
Mr. Law Director, do you think that this, in essence, takes the legs out of the noxious weed ordinance?
No, because it's, as Matt said, it's creating an exception for the appropriate circumstances. And if the city's involved with the approval of it, that makes sense to me. I was using like an example, again, this would be maybe in the county, but the conservancy programs, so a gun club that has lots of acreage can petition the ODNR, whoever it is, and they come out and they look at the natural grasses and things that are growing on the property, and ODNR encourages that. And when you do that properly within their program, you get a tax break of some sort. But the point of it is, is that they come out and they look to see if it's appropriate and it makes sense and it's actually, you know, beneficial to the, to nature and the environment. I think this would be the same thing, we're not just going to let somebody's grass grow wild and turn into a mess, but if it's done appropriately and maintained and looked at by the city every now and then, I don't have a problem with it. And it shouldn't affect the regular cases of people not mowing their yards in a, in a nice neighborhood type of thing.
Would we allow? Would this allow invasive species to be cultivated? And I'm just thinking like, over at Brooklocker Park to the south, there is, I think, pear, a pear tree infestation that is, that is, that is not solvable. But I sure wouldn't want to see this in, this in any way encourage that, encourage that. I mean, it's almost an argument, once again, for the list of proposed native or natural plants.
Yeah, I mean, I've I would say those species show up without cultivation, they just, they just appear.
Oh, they do, yeah, that's definitely the way they do. And actually, that's not the, I was thinking even after I asked that, that's not the intent of this language. I like this thing, so you, I'd like this to start moving its way forward, too. So you wanted to, in that, in three, B, you wanted to remove what? Item one and two? Correct. Would anybody ever agree that there is a mowing or trimming schedule? Or is that always going to be, there won't, there won't be one?
Well, we want, I think we want to know that, just from a enforcement standpoint, I mean.
Then who would, who in their right mind would ever say there's a mowing schedule?
Someone who plans to mow it. I mean, not ever, you know. If I were doing this, then I would say, yeah, I plan on mowing it twice a year.
And if you did only mowed it once a year, would that be a violation?
If someone complains. Potentially.
Okay.
I mean, again.
How about a $20 bet, after 10 years of this, if you have one, one property that has a mowing schedule, you win. And if you don't, I win. But keep, but go on.
I'm with you, I will lose that bet. But, I mean, I think there are, there, there's, every, every property is different. If this is, if this is the 20 acres on Deer Ridge by Melrose, who doesn't want to maintain the 20 acres that is going to be developed in the next five years. And we tell them, okay, 50-foot courtesy strip along the roadway, has to be mowed every week, everything like that. And then, you know, you can, you can mow it twice a year. Like, we're going to watch that. And I don't think that, I don't think that they would want to then have to start removing small trees in order to develop, you know, so.
Matt? I, I read that section also to be that the home property owner could tell us what they might want to do for mowing. But I also read it that we, whoever's in charge of this, would, might say, yes, it has to be knocked down every, every fall by the end of October. I thought the city could have input of what that plan is.
On Melrose, if I were reviewing it, I'd say, yes, but it's two mowings a year. You know, spring and fall, mow it, knock it down.
I have a question, myself, I wasn't part of drafting this. I guess my question would be, would there be any adjacent property owner input considerations to this? Sort of like, when you're looking at vacating an alley, you go out and you get peoples that are touched by it, there are okays or objections?
As it's written, there is not. If we wanted to, I mean, I mean, if you want the full neighborhood feedback, if you want, if you want full feedback, you can have this go to planning commission. Everyone within 500 feet would be notified, I mean, that's, that's over, I mean, Grant, you're shaking your head like that's overkill. I agree. But we do not have neighborhood feedback. But, you know, if you're in a high-density R3, 4,000-square-foot lot, you know, I'm going to be hard-pressed to say that it's going to really fit.
I don't like Japanese maples. You're growing a Japanese maple on your, on your lawn. Me as your neighbor, why can't I have a say in that? But I do get a say in if you want to do this. And by the way, I don't even know if there's a thing as a Japanese maple, I just made that up.
There is.
Okay.
Several species.
And they feel attacked.
Don't overthink it, let's.
Move forward with legislation as?
I would like to borrow the last, Dan's last thing, I might plagiarize this. Rob, do you need to look through this to ensure it's good to go? I would make a motion that we recommend approval of the, is this new, a new code? We're not revising, we're revising.
It's a new addition to 521.07.
Approval of the revised 521.07 ordinance as presented with any cleanup edits by the law director as, as he deems necessary and requests that legislation be drafted.
And I can write that up, that's my motion.
I would second that motion. So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, our last item on the agenda is farm animals.
Okay, before you, so we had discussion at, specifically city council, there was discussion, there were residents came in against the previous version of the code, comments from city council. So I took the feedback that I received from those residents who spoke, from you guys, from emails that I received, and I've come up with a new draft. And I guess the theme of this is, it's much more simplified and I think it hits towards the goals that I've heard. And I'll go through the changes. So small farm animals may be kept on any parcel within the city without limitation on, on lot size or number. That's hens, roosters, rabbits, ducks, geese, et cetera. And small animals are 0 to 50 pounds. And I have a comment about that, but I'll go through the changes. There's no requirement for manure storage, there's no requirement for shelters or fences for the small animals. Obviously, it's just, it's just, they're permitted, anyone can do what they want. Then we have medium farm animals, 50 pounds to 500 pounds. Minimum lot size, one acre. It just says they should have fences and shelter, and those fences and shelters should meet the current code. Before, it was much more complicated, et cetera. This is one acre, you have to have a fence and you have to have a shelter, and it meets the code. Then we have, a similar treatment was done with large farm animals, greater than 500 pounds. Have to have a minimum of three acres. And then the sanitation, we removed any standards for manure. We added 1158.06, which is a 4H educational exemption, so 4H, Future Farmers of America or similar youth agricultural programs shall be permitted. Grandfathering generally stays the same. Few notes on, a few notes from emails and conversations I had. The purpose for grandfathering is, and why we, why we did and many communities do ask for a permit or some documentation, if there's an issue two or three years after an ordinance is passed, it falls on the property owner to prove that they're grandfathered. So they need to show that in 2025, I had X, Y, and Z. So it's put in the code to facilitate good communication. If we have something in the file, pull up, hey, you know, there's, there's two horses on this lot, I don't think it's allowed. We can look in the file and say, they are grandfathered in, they're permitted horses. If they're causing a nuisance in terms of smell, noise, et cetera, it can be looked at in that way, but in terms of these horses, they're permitted and they're grandfathered. So really, it's to facilitate good communication, and that good communication is, could eventually, if, without the good communication, the proof of grandfathering falls upon the resident. They have to show in 2025, I had this. And five years from now, that might be difficult. So I think a lot of people felt attacked about that, but it's really just to foster good communication so that we have something in the file, something pops up, we look in the file, great. Don't have to worry about that, because they're grandfathered. So, another thing about grandfathering, it's not for Fluffy the pig, it's for one pig. So when Fluffy the pig dies, you don't lose the grandfathering for that animal. Or if you sell Fluffy the pig, you don't lose the grandfathering. It's, I had three pigs in 2025, before you created this ordinance. I can have three pigs at 100 Oak Street in perpetuity until I cease having pigs there for a year. Or they are a huge violation. Even when I sell the property, it goes with the property. The next people don't want to have pigs, that's their fine, that's fine. But if part of the allure of your property was that there were three pigs there, the grandfathering goes with that. And generally, with zoning, grandfathering goes with the property owner. Or not with, with the property. We are not in the business of Mr. Jones gets three pigs, but no one therefore shall ever have three pigs on that property. That's not how it works. Zoning is a property rights, and the property rights go with the land.
I suppose what I would say about number four, and kind of in discussions with folks in the community, the opinion that I've kind of heard out there is just because you can doesn't mean you should. In other word, in other words, because Mr. and Smith, Mr. and Mrs. Smith had pigs, I don't know that, I think the trepidation is, is that just because they can and they do, are those animals going to be therefore properly cared for, et cetera? I think that that concern is out there, in other words. So I just wanted to throw that out there and see what you thought about that.
Sure, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, and if it is an issue, the, the, you know, the, the law director feels very confident that with the ordinances about noise and smell, that, that they can be, they can, they can be, fix those items with those ordinances.
Mr. Russell?
Yes, Grant. And real quick, I thought that, Rob, that the changes on that noise ordinance on animals and removing it from dogs was outstanding, and I meant to thank you for it because I think that that actually helps set up this as a, as a proper next step. So I appreciate the proactive approach on that. And, you know, and the, I think also the outgrowth of that was public comment on the, on the farm animals. And I actually think this is, you know, this reflects more of the conversations I was having, especially with the gentleman, of course, whose name I can't remember, who was our, Tom Demuth, had, had, had a lot of good input in conversations that I had with him, and this reflects that a heck of a lot more. So I appreciate the direction. The one thing I'd want to put out to the committee is that I still think that this necessit, requires a community meeting forum to take input and and have this, and have this discussed, you know, specifically for this, just based on the, on the interest that it has raised, and I would hope that that's part of our process.
Just a second, Mr. Feiner?
Oh, yeah.
Just real quick, I want to make a comment on the non, or on the grandfathering. Grandfathering's a good thing, it protects the people that already have these animals and have been doing so, you know, without violating our noise and odor and waste ordinances. And that's fine. But I would just make a comment that you might want to consider whether you want that grandfathering to run with the land, you know, when it gets transferred. Because part of sometimes grandfathering is that eventually it's being phased out. We got the people that have them now, they can have them. But when they're, as they move and they leave and they quit having these animals, then it's just done. And that might be something that a community wants, is to take, you know, the next 30 years to phase out having these bigger animals in city limits. I would raise it as something to consider. Certainly, if the transfer was among family, that's one thing. But to always have a property that forever and ever and ever can have three horses seems odd. It seems like it ought to phase out at some point in time.
And, and Mr. Russell?
Well, as an example, I would use the Demuth property that has a, has some infrastructure for farm animals. And that's a sellable feature of the, of the property, the same as if they had a nice deck. And I would, I would want to be, them to be able to enjoy the benefit of the sale of that asset, of that feature, that only having grandfathering protects them. Now, if the next owner at some point in time doesn't maintain the grandfather by letting it not being used continuously for 12 months, that, that's, that's, that's the way we, we get towards, moving towards the code. I think that's, so I, I, I side with the, this is, this does go with the property.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Demuth has chickens, correct? So if we've removed the farm animal restrictions for small animals, that particular instance, because we've removed those restrictions, anybody can have chickens, anybody can have rabbits, anybody can have whatever, as long as it's under 50 pounds. So in my view, to, to, I think the law director's point, we are specifically going towards, when we're talking about grandfathering, we are specifically talking about law, medium to large animals, because we removed restrictions on the smaller animals. So therefore, anytime Dick and Harry can have a chicken, or a chicken house in their backyard. So I guess it would be my view that we strike number four. Because I, I think that there's issue with because I, I think that there's issue with, with allowing that to, to go with the property versus individuals.
Point made, but now Tom Bag of Donuts has three horses and a barn facility that maintains, that supports three horses. So go make your case on, go make your case that it, on, on a property that otherwise wouldn't support three horses, now go make your case on, on what you just said, because I think it, I think it fails.
In that particular instance, the infrastructure is in place, and that would be a sellable feature for that property.
Which means the grandfathering needs to stick with the property.
Yeah, I guess the, what's the horse stable called, Two Bells, or Two Out There by Emory Adams? So, thinking about that now, that, that, my comment, that would be problematic, that you couldn't sell a, a stable type of property to the next stable type of operator, so. Yeah, I know, I'd need to think that through, but that's, that's a good point, in the sense of there, those are larger animals, but the property is also set up for it, and would be almost, be unmarketable if the next person couldn't maintain a stable business there.
Perhaps if we add, perhaps if we add language, non-conforming rights shall tran, transfer with the property with sustainable infrastructure, that, I don't know, I'm just thinking out, but I, I think, I, I, I see, I see your point there, Mr. Russell. And, and I suppose that's why, that's why it would need to stay in, but I, I, I don't know if we could clarify that just a little further in, in terms of.
So, are there any other thoughts on the grandf, I had one other issue I wanted to bring up.
I just want to get into, into, once again, into the details of the, the right to, the right to the grandfather is with the property, it doesn't require us to go look to see if they have the infrastructure or not. That's simply the intent of what the grandfathering is protecting. And, and, and I heard loud and clear that they don't want folks going onto their properties to see what, what they have, just because they're already doing it. If we, if we start putting, it has to, the grandfathering only exists for infrastructure or something, then you'd, you'd, you'd need somehow to have the proof of the infrastructure.
Yeah, it's too complicated.
It's too complicated, leave it simple, if they want to take advantage of it, and show the proof that they had it, and if they don't, because you're right, and, and for most of the small, small animals, it doesn't make a difference. Because the property, this, this, this encodes the right to have the small animals anyway.
I think it, I think it's best to err on the grandfathering going with the property.
Okay, I agree. And, and I, I guess I would just like to let everybody know that, that Councilman Bowman is now a chicken farmer. They'll be here soon, the chicken house is in the backyard, and I'm excited. Let's go ahead.
Sneaking in under the wire, huh? Other issue, the one, one comment, I mean, I think it's a good comment, I, I received about this new ordinance. It's kind of that gray area of goats. Pygmy goats are forty to eighty, ninety pounds. So I just wanted some feedback, if we do an exemption, exemption for goats.
I mean, I think.
Because of the fifty pound.
Going goats into the small animal category, not requiring.
Oh, from the small.
Yeah.
So anybody can have a goat?
But.
Yeah, you and I had kind of discussed that, because I, because I said.
I don't know enough about goats, I don't know, I'm not qualified to comment.
I think once you start making exceptions like that, it could go down a slippery slope, and somebody's going to say, well, what about my?
Alpaca.
Yeah, my pygmy, my pygmy pig, or whatever.
So, the, so the comment, the comment was that pygmy goat should be included as a small animal?
Yeah.
Because they would be under the fifty pound weight.
But they, they.
But it said, it said expected adult weight of less than fifty pounds, and, and the definition of pygmy goat that I just heard, which is the first time I've ever heard of a pygmy goat, was forty to eighty pounds.
Yeah.
So expected weight, three quarters of the expected weight that would, would be over the fifty pound limit. And then, and then farm animals medium specifically says goat.
I know, I mean, I'm just saying, the, some feedback I got from this version was positive, but they said, what about goats? And so, that's, I'm just having that discussion.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Why is, why is this goat different, I guess, I don't know, I mean.
I think because.
They're quiet, I guess.
They're. I think just because of, there's more, there's more frequency of people keeping goats in the city than, than most other animals that we've been talking about, like pigs and horses. There are more groups of goats.
What if we define a small animal as up to eighty pounds?
I don't know.
I'm good with the way it is.
And maybe, you know.
Do you want goats all over the city, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
How many people, I mean, how many people are we talking about?
So, so was, was the statement, was it concerned because these goats would be typically on, on properties that are smaller than one acre?
Yeah, I think, I just, I think there's, there's, there's more frequency of people having goats, and they'd like them to be exempt also. So, I'm just, I'm just bringing up as a conversation point, when I wrote this, I did think, goats are a weird one. They, they're, they kind of, they straddle the line, I'm sure there's tons of other animals that straddle the line.
Are all goats the same, or are you talking about just a specific breed of goat?
Well, pygmy goats are smaller, and then, I'm sure there's all sorts of goats.
Yeah, the, the goats especially, that you have them the size of a, say, a small dog, which is a pygmy goat, and then you have goats that are three and a half feet tall, and those are a hundred, a hundred and fifty pounds, so.
Are you a goat farmer, too?
No, I just, I.
Put that, put that goat on a, on a diet.
You sound like one.
So, would it, you know, the farm animal small is, is really because it, although we're naming them, it's, it's because what they, they don't need a lot of land, in essence, to, it, it's more, you don't want to put a, you don't want to put a heifer cow on a, on a small, on a four thousand square foot property.
Sure.
But, but it sounds like on this, on this goat thing, it can be fine on a four thousand square foot property, just like a, just like a, having a crazy dog that likes skunks. So, so why don't just, just add, add, add pygmy goat to far, farm animal small, and be done with it, if, if that's a, a good exception? And you know what, I'm sure there's going to be more exceptions coming up, and we amend the code, as, as necessary.
Sure.
If I may, most of these small animals that are we talking about are two-legged, you know, animals, ducks, chickens, rabbits, you know, that kind of stuff.
Rabbits, most rabbits have four.
Yeah.
Yeah, but two of them are pretty little. Any rate. There you go, yeah.
Well, I'm, I don't know, do you want to make an exception for pygmy goats? I mean, is it, you know, it's, and then is some cousin of a pygmy goat that, you know, I don't know.
Deal with it as it comes up. Call your attorney.
I would, I would think. What about the, the, isn't there like a, a pig that's a, a pet pig, that is, that can be kept on small property? Is, is there different?
Guinea pig.
No.
Little pot-bellied pigs, or whatever.
But, but pot-bellied pigs are kind of an interesting area, because you let those things go, they're going to weigh a hundred pounds, seventy-five to a hundred pounds, easily. I don't know.
Are you a pig farmer, too?
But, but do they, don't, do we, is the intent, pot-bellied pig is almost, is almost a domesticated animal, more or less, would you see this, this, I don't think that, I don't know that that meets the criteria for.
That would fall, yeah, I mean, there, we all learn in zoning, and these rules, there's, there's always five exceptions to it, and five gray areas, but.
Does this give you latitude to make exceptions, or you gotta, you gotta hold the line, I mean, right, I mean?
Well, one, I mean, first of all, I mean, we really need a complaint. You know, no matter what version of this ordinance, even the, the first version, the second version, this version, the city is not, the city is not looking for them.
Right.
It's, we have a complaint.
Right.
You know, the rooster next door keeps attacking my kids, that's, I heard that one yesterday.
Oh.
But then, you know, and then, so, but this is some framework, you know, this is some framework. And I think most of the community can get behind that, you know, pigs and horses shouldn't be kept on small parcels. That's really kind of, if I had to summarize this, is medium and big farm animals should not be kept in small city spaces. That, to me, summarizes this whole thing.
Understood.
Yeah, I'm good with the way it is, I don't know, we, there's a million exceptions.
Make that an introductory statement. Covers your ass, I think we're good. I think you've done a great job.
And I agree with, with your statement that the, the balancing of nuisance and simplified standards work well together.
Yeah. I, I was going to say to, to Grants earlier, and I'm, I'm, I, I spoke to, I said something to Rob before our council meeting earlier this week, I think because that the noise, waste, and odor aspect takes care of probably ninety-five percent of what we wanted to accomplish, because those are the bad actors. And if you have noise, excessive waste, and odor, you're not taking care of your critters. And I think that that achieves most of what we wanted to do, when we set out to do this anyways.
Agree. What else?
So we would like to move forward with the farm animals, the new chapter, eleven fifty-eight, farm animals, we would like to move forward with that as, as is, and, and would recommend legislation. Is that, or do we need further discussion?
I think it, I. I personally think we should, um, we make a recommendation to council to, uh, we make a recommendation to council that, that we want to move forward to this, go forward with this. There's obviously then an opportunity for council to discuss, as they either accept or reject our recommendation, knowing that there's only four people here, so the majority of council is not sitting here today. And additionally, requesting that the administration hope, hold a, an open house public forum to discuss this proposal, before it hits legislation. I wouldn't want to see it hit legislation until the full council gives its nod, and, and that forum happens, but I'll, that's just my, my view.
I would concur.
Yeah, I think council ought to take a look at it, but, you know, if we put it on the agenda, put it in the packet, and let the rest of the world see it, give it a, an extra reading, and, you know, approve it then.
With, with, with the previous two recommendations, my expectation is that, that at the, the next meeting, at the October twenty-first meeting, we're going to see our committee report and two pieces of legislation affecting that committee report. Obviously, if the committee reports get voted, if the recommendation doesn't carry the day in council, I would assume, Rob, that we would then just pull the, we would pull the legislation? So, for the first, for the previous two, the wooded lots and the, and the maintenance, and the maintenance code, we're going to go, we're going to make, our committee report says, we recommend adoption, and we want to, we want legislation. So at the October twenty-first meeting, there will both be on the agenda, the committee report and the legislation getting its first reading.
Correct.
And if, and if the committee report would be rejected, we would just simply then scratch the, we would just simply pull the, the other two agendas, the other two, the, the legislation from the agenda.
Right, I mean, somebody can always make a motion at any time, in any case, to, to remove legislation from consideration, but I mean, you're basically voting on it right then and there, because you'd have to have a majority vote to, to pull it, you know? You've asked for something, now you're wanting it taken away, you, you, council would have the power to do that. But if they don't want to accept the report that you guys are recommending to adopt it, and there's a majority vote to not accept your report, then they are rejecting the legislation anyway.
So would you still vote on the legislation, or not?
Well, you, it should be the same vote.
Well, it should be, but do you go through the three readings, and then the, and then the final vote, or not?
I, I would, I would think not, because they're rejecting your proposal, that it even be considered.
Yeah, if, if the, if the full council.
If the full council would reject the committee report, I would, I would vote, even though I support the legislation, I would, I would, I would vote to kill it. But in this case, on the farm animals, I'm saying, do not have legislation there, because I believe the steps should be, first, council should, should bless it, and then if council blesses it, the next thing that should happen is it should go to a public forum, and then after that, if we, if we hear things at the public forum that we think should be incorporated into the, into the language, we come back and do it again, either at another meeting in October, or the first meeting in November, and then you have legislation ma, make its way through.
What do you envision, I'm not familiar with this public forum, how would you, you just, you would, the administration would just announce a date, we're going to talk about farm animals, and they would, and the administration would make a presentation, and then?
Maybe the whole meeting, or something.
Yes.
So, I, I guess what I hear the committee saying is that we would present this draft.
Well, make a motion.
Make a motion, we would, we, we would make a motion that we would present the current draft of the farm animals legislation to council, to full council, and we would also recommend that, as a part of that pro, and, and make it clear that we do not recommend legislation at this time, and we would also recommend that the folks in the administration seek public comment on, on this draft.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Real quick. I have this, Rob, I have this in the zoning code. Some communities have their farm animal ordinances in other codes, like the five hundred section, or whatever. Do you have any thoughts on that, as the law director? Okay, so, being a, being a zoning code, it will, it will go to planning commission in November or December?
Then we got to start over, we don't have enough.
Right.
That we don't have enough time to get it done.
I mean, planning, planning commission is open to the public for comment, and legislation is not drawn up until after, after planning commission and planning and zoning review it. So, at this, at this point in time, it would go to planning commission in November, it'd have its first reading.
November thirteenth, we would see it November thirteenth. It would be on, and then we both could make the recommendation for legislation, and legislation could be on the agenda on November seventeenth, three readings. Three readings.
So I think the public meeting for this should be done, you know, in the next week.
Last, last week of October. You, you have, you then have between October twenty-first, which is our next meeting, so that's Tuesday. Tuesday the twenty-first, so you would have the, from the twenty-second until our Planning and Zoning on November twelfth. You have, you have almost two to, two and a half, three weeks.
If I can chime in here, again, it's a toss-up. If we're not, if we're, we don't want to confuse or put some burden on a new council that hasn't been fully involved in this. I mean, all of our, for instance, dog and snake regulations are in Chapter Five. So this can fit there too.
And that avoids it going to planning.
That avoids your scheduling conflict and it also takes a burden away from those that haven't been involved unless they've been in the audience or live streaming or whatever.
So you're proposing to put it in a different section of the code then?
Yeah, take it out of zoning and it'd take away all these other requirements. And put it where we control dogs, snakes and the painting of rabbits or dying of rabbits.
You know, you know, when you were saying that and I was, which is the first time I've heard the thought that this is not a zoning matter or it could be considered not a zoning matter. It struck me as really making a lot of sense. And you think of what the, the legislation that we're still, we're under consideration about animal noise. Why, why would the animal noise one be in, I think that's in Chapter Five?
It is.
And why would that be in Chapter Five and this not be? Why isn't it right next to it or?
That's where, that's where it should go, given it good thought, that's where it should go.
Yeah.
So Brian, amend your, amend your motion to move it to Chapter Five, I guess.
Is that a big lift to re?
No, not at all.
How does that fit with the staff, with you, with the Planning and Zoning staff here?
That works, I mean, that works just fine. I mean, there's no, there's no permits required.
And so we're, we're moving it to Chapter Five of?
Yes.
Of the municipal code?
Probably specific, I mean, Chapter Five of the municipal code. And I just want to say, you know, gosh, I think I pulled, I think I have a list of a hundred and six communities and their animal code, their farm animal codes. And I would say, I would say it's more rare of, of the, of the sixty that do have farm animal code that allow, of a hundred communities, thirty-five of them just outlaw farm animals one hundred percent. Twenty are silent and Finley's one of the silent ones. And then there's about fifty to sixty that do have codes. I would say most of those codes are in their five hundred section where probably ten or twelve are in the zoning. So that's why I bring it up because it probably is more, it, it fits more in the five hundred.
All right.
I'd go along with that.
Like the smaller, small animal stuff is more in five hundred, but the large animal is more zoning really when you get to it. Because it talks about lot size restrictions.
But it's, I mean, it's, it's very minimal. It just says one acre essentially.
Yeah. Chapter Five.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Why don't you read your motion again?
Okay, so the, we recommend that a draft of, that a draft of the current, of the cur, of the current farm animals ordinance be provided to full council for comment. No legislation at this time until a public meeting can be held for pu, okay. Meeting can be, I, I, okay, can be held. A move to Chapter Five of municipal code.
I think that those are bullet points?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to.
All right, given that we're moving it, are we still not asking for legislation? It still, that still makes sense.
Correct, I think so.
All right.
Because after the public meeting, if changes need to be made or things go in a different direction.
We have time to get the public meeting done and three readings by the end of the year.
Yeah.
You okay with that? Okay. Okay, so I second.
I think we're looking at a public meeting at the end of October.
I think definitely in October.
Okay.
I'm gonna go, I mean, in my, my thoughts, I'm going to go talk with the mayor and service director and Rob Baitner and just say, hey, do a public get together about this. Let's do it in the next week or two.
Last, last week of October. Because then you can.
Last week of October because then it also can be announced at the October twenty-first council meeting.
Okay.
All right, so Brian, I got a second on that, right?
Yep.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that concludes our agenda. We will call it a.
Flood code. Wanna get this to council real quick, the flood code?
The what?
It's the flood code that was sent to this body. It's, was emailed to you guys.
Yes, I did read that.
It's a, it's a regulatory update is what it is.
I did read that, Eric.
So if you guys want to do that real quick, it's not gonna take long.
No, it's not on the agenda. We can, we will add it for.
Can we have a special meeting? Because this needs probably be adopted by the first of the year.
Is it a zoning thing?
It's a, it's a building code thing. City Planning Commission already adopted, has moved it on. So whatever the process would be.
This morning at Planning Commission, we had it as a special review item.
Rob, you had a comment you wanted to insert here.
Am I hearing there's a question about whether or not you can discuss a topic that's not on this agenda? Or are you all?
Well, that came up, yes, indirectly. Do you have an opinion?
An item that's not on our agenda, so we didn't give it twenty-four hour notice.
Okay, let me explain this. This is a good learning point that came up in another matter. Regular scheduled meetings require notice of time and place. This is a regular scheduled meeting.
Yes.
Time and place, not purpose slash agenda. Special meetings require time, place and purpose, which means agenda. So you don't, you can, you don't have to give, you, you don't have to give an agenda at all and you can certainly add or take away.
Yeah.
All right.
Perfect.
Good news.
One twenty-one point twenty-two F.
Well.
Glad you were here.
Your, your, Denise needs to be informed of that.
Okay.
And that, I mean, that's news to me, but that's not, that, that's not how we've been operating. They'll have a copy of it upstairs.
I remember Ward One accusing us of having an illegal water and sewer meeting. You remember that? But anyway.
Go ahead, Eric.
Would you like me to read the staff report from, it's, it's a very short kind of on the, on the flood code that Eric provided?
Sure.
Yeah, so.
You're gonna have to get a, a committee report thing from Denise and have it available for us at the next meet, right before the next meeting or something.
Okay. Just sign it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll do this real quick, but so Eric provided us a draft of the City of Finley's updated flood damage reduction regulations. The ordinance is a full repeal and replacement of the city's existing flood plan management provisions. The process to prepare this ordinance was carried out in direct coordination with Ohio Department of Natural Resources or ODNR. ODNR provided the model code framework, reviewed our proposed local standards and approved the draft before it was brought forward for consideration. This update ensures that Finley remains in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP. Compliance with NFIP is essential to maintain property owners' eligibility for federally backed flood insurance, reduce long-term risk and damage for flooding and strengthening public safety and community resilience. So it is important to note that the required provisions of the ODNR model cannot be reduced or altered at this point. The city has already incorporated its highest, the higher standards through the review process with ODNR and any substantive modifications of the draft would need to be resubmitted to ODNR for review and approval before adoption. So by moving this forward, the City of Finley will formally replace its outdated flood code with a modern ODNR-approved version that reflects both state and federal standards as well as Finley's higher local standards. So we recommended approval as presented by Eric as unanimous vote.
So in working with this, if you guys remember, I think I'll, for you have been on, we went through the community assessment visit with FEMA. This was one of the outstanding non-compliant items that we had in our, our program. So we were given at the time to work closely with ODNR to update our two thousand and six model that they had with the state to the two thousand and nineteen model. Work hand-in-hand with them and at, at that time, we gave them our higher standards, which in this code that you guys received and that the public will see is still unread. Nothing's changed on that end. The only thing that changed was anything in black and that's from the state regulatory body, ODNR. It's pretty simple. It gets us, it brings us into complacency with FEMA and ODNR for our National Flood Insurance Program. And I'd expect probably in ten years, this will be updated again, so if you have any questions.
So we really don't have an option to change any of this language. We are simply going through the process.
We are going through the process to adopt the state model with our higher standards.
I recommend adoption of this, of this as presented.
I'll second that.
And just a little bit of people watching at home, this will be, from this point on, this will be on the zoning page for public viewing until we get through the process with council for adoption, so.
I don't. Do, do we have legislation then on the, we don't have legislation yet.
I think Rob will create this with a ordinance, number that has went through both committees to go to council for the next meeting.
Okay. I don't think we need to specifically state that then.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Go get your parking ticket.
You should walk. You wouldn't get one. Move to a yard.
I wouldn't get here.
Second. We are adjourned. It is
Yes.
two o'clock.
What?
Okay, right. Here, sign here.
That's, yeah, that's what I was. Well, I, once again, I've been doing this for how long and now I know.
Yeah, now you know.
You don't need an agenda.
We don't need an agenda.